All right, so we'll start to. I know. We're going to start with our board meeting today. This is our board meeting of April 12th. And thank you for being with us. And we'll start with the roll call. Actually, we don't have to do a roll call officially because no one's on Zoom. All right, that was quick. So it looks like we're all here. So now we'll just move on to saluting the flag. Please join me in saluting the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's gonna be one of those days. All right, are there any modifications to the agenda? CEO Hayes?
Thank you Chair Bass. There are modifications to the agenda today. Items D2 and D10 will be pulled from consent for discussions. Item D4, G1, and H2 will be pulled from consent and will return at a date uncertain. For clarification on item G1 regarding the auditor controller, Supervisor Bushnell did have a conversation with her. She is not available to be present at today's meeting. And so that is the catalyst behind pulling that and returning at a date where the auditor controller can interact with your board in that discussion. Those are all of the changes for today.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with those modifications that were made?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll go to public comment. And this is on the consent calendar minus all of those items. So would you go through those just specifically? So because I'm looking through my list and I thought it's easier to ask you.
Yeah, absolutely Chair Bass. It's item D2 and D10 are pulled from consent for discussion. Items D4, G1, and H2 are being pulled from the calendar altogether and will return at a date uncertain.
All right, so if you are wishing to make a public comment on the consent items, we'll go to those in public, in person here today to start before we go to the phone. And if you're on the phone and you wish to make a comment, you can call in the number that's on the bottom of the screen and press star nine to raise your hand. There is a significant time delay, so if you don't press star nine, like very soon, you could miss the opportunity to speak. It is the speaker's responsibility to press star nine early so that we know that you are on the line. So is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on any of the consent items that are still left on the consent calendar? All right, apparently not. Nikki, do we have anyone on the phone?
No, Madam Chair, we have no callers.
All right, so no one wanted to comment on that consent. All our new items that were remaining, so we'll go back to the board. Any comments before we vote? Apparently not. All right.
I'll just do a roll call vote then. Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
All right, and I know that we have the COVID presentation, but I would like to squeeze in the retirement resolution for Mark Fitman prior to that. Is that all right? Okay. So since the audience is very filled up today and we think you might be here for this. Like, I mean, yeah. Rex, go ahead and say it again. This is a Todd sighting.
Yeah, so.
We want to let these retirees get back to what they're doing. So yes, we are losing.
He's up early today.
We're losing a longtime employee. It's always unfortunate and very sad. But obviously, you can tell from the crowd that's here. The, Mark, who I don't think I ever knew in person, was very well regarded among his crew. You're surrounded. So, okay, Mark, I'm good. Do you want to come up here while I read this to you?
Thank you.
All right. Whereas Mark Fitman, sorry, has been a dedicated public servant to the citizens of Humboldt County for over 23 years. And whereas Mark began his career as a building inspector one, and on October 13th, 1998, after attending the prestigious Butte College Building Inspection Technology Program, my words having a hard time coming out this morning. He was subsequently promoted to the position of building inspector two on December 26, 1999. And whereas Mark was promoted to the position of plan checker one on January 10th, 2016, and then to the position of plan checker two on December 30th, 2019. And whereas Mark has diligently maintained his continuing education credits and certifications as a building inspector and plan checker. And whereas Mark has performed more than 25,000 field inspections to bring both residential and commercial projects to completion. And whereas Mark and avid hunter and fisherman had many opportunities during inspections to share stories with his customers about the one that got away. And whereas Mark has performed over 1,500 construction plan checks for both residential and commercial projects. And whereas Mark has actively promoted public health and safety by ensuring that construction meets state and local codes. And whereas Mark has been a viable resource to the county due to his proficiency with and knowledge of the California Building Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 24, and companion codes, including Humboldt County Code, Title III, Land Use and Development. And whereas Mark has exhibited sound problem-solving skills and has been a hallmark of his interactions with applicants, contractors, property owners, and design professionals. And whereas Mark has accepted new challenges without reservation, making it a pleasure to work with such a competent and committed professional, now therefore be it resolved, does the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and citizens of Humboldt County hereby commend and thank Mark Fitman for his dedication and service to the citizens of Humboldt County and wish him a long and prosperous retirement. I move the resolution.
Thank you.
Can we get a second to that resolution?
It's a great honor, thank you. All right, thank you. Oh, my gosh. Well, I just want to thank everybody. And it's an honor to be recognized. And I've made a lot of friends, made a lot of people, seen a lot of country. And I do appreciate this honor. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Actually, Mike? Mark, I'm sorry. The mic is on, is what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I think it's on.
Yeah, no, yeah. Did you hear? Because Supervisor Bushnell said it wasn't on. Okay. Never mind.
Well, I usually talk loud anyway, so most of the time you don't. You don't need a mic for me. Anyway, it is an honor and thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Mark, you always have to weigh a crowd. Are they really happy he's leaving or are they sad that he's going? So I think I've weighed the crowd because you've got former bosses there. You are a, I hate to say bright spot, but you are, you always have a hello. You always say hi. You're always smiling. And the other thing is, as you guys know, I have a lot of friends that are big developers here in Humboldt County. But they all appreciate you. I talked to a couple and they said you're gonna be big shoes to fill, everything else. But you are a problem solver, not a problem finder. And that's, I mean, that's all we're looking for. I think that's all they're looking for. And you have that bond with the people that are building housing that we so need and building all the things we do. And your oversight over the years has been second to none. I mean, I heard a lot of good things. And that's, it's all you want to do is if you don't hear a complaint. I've never heard a complaint on you. I'm not gonna say I have on anybody else, but no. I'm just saying, I've never, I've never heard a complaint on you. And you've walked people through a tough situation to make it not a tough situation. Because rules suck, we know that. But we have to follow them for future development and for the environment. So, and you've been able to do a great job on that and I appreciate it very much. Sad to see you go. Know you're not going far because the rivers are here too nice, so.
All right, Director Ford, or is anyone, I will offer this to the, yeah, definitely Director Ford and then anyone else can speak under the public comment period. But Director Ford?
It's hard to follow Supervisor Bone's comments because they are very, very true. And my experience with Mark is that he is somebody that I've never had a complaint on. And I think that one of the things that is true about that is that when you've been here for 23 years and nobody has offered a one-way bus ticket or some other gift to help them move along, it really says something. Because in 23 years, you have a lot of opportunities to upset somebody along the way. It's my understanding, though, that wasn't always the case. At one point, Mark was a feared building inspector. When he'd show up on the site, the contractors were a little bit anxious about what he was gonna find. They found one way to make the inspection go a little easier is to start talking to him about hunting or fishing. And suddenly, the inspection went very, very well. Obviously, with the number of people who are here today, Mark has earned a lot of respect, particularly within the department. And it's not really possible to replace the experience that he has. It's not possible to calculate the ways that he has helped the public by being a plan checker who can also go out in the field, who can do a variety of things and is absolutely willing to do it. He's got experience, talent, and above all, an attitude of giving of himself. And that will greatly be missed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Well, I think we can, any other board members before we open up to the public comment? All right, again, if you are listening at home or watching at home and you want to comment on this item, you should press, well, call the number that's showing on the screen, press star nine to raise your hand. Important for people to know when you are watching us and then you call in, turn the volume off on your video feed because there is a time delay. And if you're watching what's happening on the TV, you're going to be behind the game because what's happening on the phone is actually real time. So with that, we will go, is there anyone in the, is there anyone in the audience here who would like to make any comments regarding this item? I think they all clapped enough, Rodney. Okay, yeah. All right, well, then we'll go, is there anyone on the phone? All right, there is no one on the phone either. I did move the resolution earlier, so is, was there a second yet?
A second.
Okay. All right, any further comments? Nope. Is your thing up yet? Are you trying?
Yes.
Yes. You just like to hear me do roll call votes. Are you guys ready? Okay, so Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell. Yes, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone.
Yes.
Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass.
Yes.
Great, motion carries five zero, thank you. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
Before everybody leaves, can we give a, boy, everybody sat right back down. That was good. John Miller's on here today, too. And John Miller would not.
He's gonna be back.
Is he gonna be back?
Yeah, he's sick today.
All right, I'm sorry, all right.
He's taking it all back, what he's gonna say.
See you guys next week.
Or soon.
Thanks, everyone. Mark, good luck, bud.
Thank you.
All right, so. Actually, well, we have the, normally the items that are pulled, we would do after the discussion. Alicia, okay. Clarification for Supervisor Bushnell. Yeah, D4, D2.
D2 and D10 through the chair are pulled for discussion. We just addressed D2. D10 will come shortly. D4, G1, and H2 are pulled altogether and will return at a future date.
All right, so. Well, we actually already did that, but sure.
Well, they're here.
Oh, you got that. Okay, so we already went through the consent calendar. That's why that would have been appropriate then. But all righty, go ahead. You can read it.
Nat, I want to, you guys got flowers this morning, too, I saw, so. You guys want to come up here? I want to do a proclamation. We're recognizing our National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, or better known as Everybody That Makes It Happen. This is a proclamation. It's whereas in 1994, President Bill Clinton signed Presidential Proclamation 6667 declaring the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Life and death emergencies can occur at any time and dispatchers are the first and most critical link in that moment when a citizen needs emergency assistance from law enforcement or other emergency services. They've helped deliver babies. They've helped talk people through some of the most trying times of their life. A communications dispatcher is always poised, ready to answer a call for service and no matter how stressful, frightening, or tragic that call may be, the training and experience that ensures they don't panic, freeze, remain courageous, calm as they perform their duties in the face of these challenging times. When an emergency occurs, their proper response of deputies is crucial to the protection of life and preservation of property. The safety of those deputies is dependent on the quality and accuracy of the information by the dispatcher from citizens who telephone the Humboldt County Sheriff's Communication Center. A dispatcher is able to multitask like no other person. They are able to answer 911 calls, answer an internal phone line, listen and respond to the radio monitor, other law enforcement jurisdictions, enter essential data into the computer, talk to fellow dispatchers, and deliver exceptional service. Whereas dispatchers serve the public daily recognition by the beneficiaries of their services in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their service. The sheriff's emergency communications center answered, get this, 150,665 calls for service in 2021, of which 26,236 were 911 calls. 150,000 calls, 26,000, there's only 365 days in a year. Whereas the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Emergency Communication Teams is made up of 11 dispatchers, three senior dispatchers, and one supervisor. And each dispatcher has demonstrated compassion, understanding, professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, it be resolved that Humboldt County Supervisors, Sheriff William Hansel, and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commence and thanks to Humboldt County Emergency Communications Dispatches for their service to the community. It's already been moved, so.
It's already been voted on.
Yeah, moved, voted, signed, sealed, delivered. There will be a dispatcher's awareness barbecue next Monday, if anybody would like to come, down on the apron, so. Where the sheriffs park out front. Sorry.
And thanks, thanks for being here and waiting. I didn't realize, well, we didn't pull it off the consent, so we didn't realize that you wanted to read it, so you're welcome. Did you want to, is reading one more thing?
Well, and thank you for approving. I've got, we're gonna post the Ukrainian flag for a couple of weeks because of, we sometimes sit up here and argue about lot line adjustments, who and what goes where and everything else. And sometimes I think we bypass the atrocities that are happening to some very good people. I could use all the terms that everybody has used, I mean, even our president. But I just think it shows support at these times. And in two weeks, if we haven't come to much of a resolution, I'm gonna ask for the flag to fly for a couple more weeks. Because what's happening in our world is, it's fearful, it's frightening, and it just bothers the heck out of me. So I appreciate the board for supporting this and I'll hang the flag up at the first break. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I do know that we have the COVID update. And then after that, we'll go to the other item that had been pulled for discussion. So welcome, Sophia.
Okay, good morning, your board. I'm Sophia Pereira, Public Health Director, and I'm here to give a COVID-19 update to the board and to the community. So I'm just gonna touch on a little bit of the current trends that we're seeing, give a little bit of an update on our dashboard. And then I will invite Office of Emergency Services Manager Ryan Derby up for the item that's also before your board, that terminate the local emergency proclamation. So we are at a state right now where we're seeing, continuously see a downward trend across the state. So that's really nice to see. Test positivity is currently stable. We're about under 2% locally. Of course, with home testing, we don't have full visibility. But right now, the numbers seem to be looking pretty good in terms of hospitalizations. That's very low right now. We've had one death that was reported out last week. And our case rate as of last week was 1.2. And the last time our case rate was this low was October 2020. Just for context, that we've had surges since, you know, having low points before. So I would say that right now, we are in a lull. We are seeing in the Bay Area a bit of an uptick in cases. And this is due to the Omicron subvariant BA2. So you may have heard of that subvariant. I believe that's currently the dominant variant in the United States right now. And so that is why around the world, you're seeing surges happening in different communities. And every country, every state, every community has a different immunity history with this virus. So it's gonna probably play out differently in different places in terms of the risk of hospitalizations and such. So we're definitely keeping an eye on that, what that would look like seeing a surge in cases here. And really, our hope is that the next surge that we have, especially with BA2, is that it would be more of an outpatient surge. Meaning, we're not relying on the hospital system to get through that surge, that it really could be managed outside with, you know, the oral antiviral treatments like Paxlovid. Or, you know, people are just not experiencing a severe illness. So that's really our hope, is that it's really outpatient and not really being a burden on the healthcare system. And then on March 30th, we published our new Humboldt County data dashboard. And really, the purpose of this was to create an interactive dashboard for the community that aligns with Humboldt County, or excuse me, California Department of Public Health's reporting and highlighting the county's total vaccination, excuse me, total vaccinated population with a focus on health equity. So there's some really great health equity data in that dashboard that folks can look at. And this dashboard is now updated weekly by our epidemiologists. And it's using a data visualization tool called Tableau. And so what's really great about Tableau is that it's really interactive. People can actually dive into the data a little deeper, go back in time, can go to a specific time period. And given that we have now two years' worth of data, that's a really valuable tool for the community. And really, our hope is also to showcase how we can use tools like Tableau to present public health data and hopefully use that tool to present other public health data in the future. So that's a little bit of an update on the state of COVID. And if it's all right, I'd like to invite up Ryan Derby to join me for the next part of our update, which is, we have before the board today a resolution to terminate the local emergency proclamation. And just a little bit of context of how we have gotten here. You know, we are currently at a stage in the pandemic where we feel that with the local health emergency still being in place, that we will be able to adapt as needed to future surges. So just for a little bit of background on the sequencing of events, the health emergency was proclaimed by the health officer March 11th, 2020, with the board ratifying March 17th, 2020. And at that time, our public health department's Department Operations Center was activated. And then the local emergency was then proclaimed by the sheriff on March 30th, 2020, with the ratification by the board April 6, 2020. We are still using state resources locally, such as OptumServe for testing and SnapNurse for rapid testing and vaccination, and also reassigning staff time to work on COVID through our Department Operations Center, our DOC. So we do anticipate that we may need some state support if we experience upcoming surges that are beyond our existing resources, hence the need to maintain the health emergency at this time. But I think it is really important to note where we're at and that we are in a much different place than we were six months ago, a year ago, to the very beginning of this pandemic. We have much more tools than we had at those times. We now have Paxlovid, you know, oral antiviral treatments. We have monoclonal antibody treatments. There's just a lot more resources that we have now through this pandemic. And this decision was made jointly with the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services and in consultation with the DOC Policy Group. And so I think it's important to note that, you know, we're not out of the woods yet. But given where we are at, the health emergency, keeping that in place will give us the tools to be able to scale up the response as needed. But I think we're at a place where we can terminate the local emergency proclamation. And so with that update, you know, here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, Paxlovid, I'm not familiar. I'm not sure how I missed all that, but what is that treatment?
Yeah, so it's a, there's probably gonna be a lot more information that'll come out about it publicly around, you know, I think President Biden and the state have been talking about test-to-treat programs. But the idea is to create an infrastructure where individuals could get tested. They test positive for COVID. And then they could actually be prescribed Paxlovid. I would need to get you some more information of, you know, the details of how that particular treatment works. But it's meant to be, you know, readily accessible for folks. Similar to, you know, if someone were to have, you know, the flu and there's Tamiflu. Like, the idea is that it's an early intervention to reduce symptoms. And so that's definitely something new that I don't think is as widely available. But I know the federal and state government are working on creating that infrastructure to make it accessible for folks, so.
So that's an oral treatment?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Just a reminder to folks, if you are on, if you're at home and you're listening and you want to comment on this item, you should already have called in and pressed star nine. And so please do it as quickly as you can, or you'll, you could lose your opportunity to speak. Any other questions? Supervisor Madron?
Thanks. I just want to thank you and the previous health officer, several of them, as well as Ryan Derby and the operations center, and just everybody that personed that center. I mean, what an incredible two years we've been through. And hard work on the part of so many people stepping up and the JEC, getting the information out there to people timely, all of that stuff. We learned a lot. I mean, this was an incredible test of our systems. And I know we're better for it now. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that everybody's done, so. Glad to be at this point.
Us, too.
Supervisor Wilson, were you gonna say anything? You just moved your mic. Okay, all right. I'm not showing any speakers calling in. Nikki, do you have any? No hands up? Are we sure our phones are working? I know, it's unusual. All right, well?
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation, accept the report, and adopt the attached resolution which terminates the local emergency as declared by the Humboldt County Sheriff on March 31st, 2020. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, are you hooked up now to the?
He stood, no, he stood.
All right, we're all on now. Okay, cool. Yeah, it worked. Motion passes, five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great job, Ryan.
Thank you for all your hard work, both of you.
Don't take this the wrong way, but we don't want to see you back too soon.
Tell us about Shagrela.
All right. So we'll go back to the other item that was polled. It's D10, from the clerk recorder registrar of voters regarding the employment of a retired annuitant and CAO Hayes.
Thank you, Chair Bass. As a CAO, we normally present this because it is just very procedural to meet CalPERS requirements. It does require this to be a discussion item for your board. This item will allow for a waiver of the 180-day post-retirement to allow Judith Hedgepath to come back and work as a retired annuitant in the clerk recorder's office, which will be incredibly useful and appreciated going into a new election cycle.
Make a motion, we accept staff's recommendation. Second?
You have a motion, this is the second. I see no one in the audience that wants to comment on this item. Is there anyone on the phones? I don't see any speakers in the speaker list. All right. I was gonna, you know, I was just congratulating Judy on retiring. I didn't know she was going to come back so quickly or not leave at all. Hopefully, hopefully she gets to one day enjoy retirement. And I think we all got our vote in. Okay, motion passes, five to zero. So next, we polled G1 off to come back at another date. And I see our clerk of the board there. I think we're going to move on to the, consider the appointment for the Humboldt County Representative on the Great Redwood Trail Authority, formerly known as the North Coast Railroad Authority Board. And I do understand we have some folks on the Zoom, and I know at least one in the audience. So please, Tracy, introduce.
Good morning. So on March 8, the board was notified that there was an at-large vacancy on the committee representing the community for the North Coast Rail Authority. The North Coast Rail Authority changed its name officially on March 14. It is now the Great Redwood Trail Agency. It was posted, and applications were accepted. There are applications with both titles on them, so that's not to be a distraction. Zoom links were sent, the applicants were contacted if they would like to make public comment. I know that Julie is on Zoom. I think Uri might be on Zoom. And the other gentleman, both Bruce and Jeff, were also contacted if they would like to discuss with you.
Okay, and Jeff is in the audience, I see him. But I think I will go to those on the Zoom first, if that's okay. And then we'll have Jeff speak. So I do see Julie. Let's pull, can we, do we pull up one person at a time, or how do we do it on?
Yeah. Sorry.
How about, we'll bring Julie to see if she wanted to say anything. And we can also, if you have any questions, we can ask her.
Good morning, Supervisors Bass, Bone, Bushnell, Madron, and Wilson. Thanks for considering my application. I'm really honored to even be able to consider doing this. I worked for 28 years for the city of Arcata, and during that time, I worked on both the Humboldt Bay Trail North Trail and also the Annie and Mary Trail. I live on the Hammond Trail and know the joys of living on the trail and all the people who use it, but also some of the challenges that go with it. And I also, in working on the trails through Arcata, really understand what it means to property owners and businesses that are located next to the trail, some of the concerns they have, and really wanting to work with them to, you know, find good solutions for them. And I think we've been able to do that to a great degree. It was also an opportunity I had in working with the NCRRA early on, just in terms of vegetation management. Since my retirement, I have found what I'm doing is I'm still volunteering, working on trails. So I've been volunteering with Humboldt Trails Council, showing up at the Hammond Trail Workdays, and also working for the McKinleyville Land Trust. We have some trails there, and we joined the Trails Council to be able to be a part of their larger organization. So I'd really be honored if you considered me. I love the idea of working on this trail, not just locally in our county, but regionally as well, because I really see it as a great opportunity for all of us. And I think trails bring a lot of joy to people, and they're also accessible to anyone. You can get out, if you can get out on the trail in a wheelchair or walk, you can use it. And I love that part of it. So happy to answer any questions you have, and thanks so much for considering.
All right, thank you, Julie. Any questions at this time, Julie? All right. Thank you. And you said we do also have Uri on the Zoom. And if you could pull him up. And Uri, you can tell us a little bit about why you're interested.
Yeah, hi. Did I unmute correctly?
Yes.
Great. Well, as you all know, I've been following this NCRRA Great Redwood Trail very closely. I'm also longtime horse advocate, helped build trails. And I see that we don't really have a equestrian presence on the board, and I think that would be incredibly valuable. So I am very well aware of some of the challenges that this authority has gone through, both as NCRRA and will have as the Great Redwood Trail Agency, providing the abandonment approval is granted. And if it's not granted, I think that there can be some other approaches as well that bring us trail activities that are meaningful and that can work for adjacent landowners and all that. So I, yeah, I've been following this very closely, been in touch with Surface Transportation Board folks, I've been in touch with Federal Rail Authority, the Timber Heritage Association. Of course, I'm a longtime member of them, and very supportive of that opportunity. And also, I'd like to make sure that we don't just, we have, assuming the abandonment process goes through, that the timber heritage isn't just completely thrown under the bus, and that we have an opportunity to utilize some of the existing infrastructure of rail for providing other opportunities for transportation, recreation, and that sort of thing. So that's what I would bring to the board. And I think it's a voice that isn't on there currently, and I think it would be very valuable. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions at this point? All right. And Jeff, I see you. And we don't have anyone on the phone either that you can see. Okay.
Is this on?
Yeah, just get, as long as you're close enough to it.
Is it good?
Really cleared out of here. So thank you, board, all the supervisors, Chair Bass, and staff. I think I bring a lot to the table for the Great Redwood Trail, because labor so often doesn't have a seat. Been involved in construction for over 27 years. I am an advocate for hiking and biking, and nothing would make me more happy to be able to ride my bicycle if it comes to pass that there is a trail that goes all the way there. I do appreciate the opportunity, you know, to come. I bring a lot to the table, because I think too often, people think labor is the problem, and really, it's the solution. Done a speed bump out in Supervisor Madron's, out on the Hammond Trail. Didn't do it personally, advocated to get it bought and paid for by union contractors here locally. And it's like a day-to-day thing, that if people want things done, they come to me, I help make that happen. So I appreciate your consideration for the opportunity to be on this board. Thank you.
All right, any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Not yet. Tracy?
I did reach out to Bruce as well, but he was unsure of the timeframe of today's meeting. So perhaps that's not it. I would also like to mention that this is a two-year vacancy. It's the community member, as Supervisor Madron is currently the seated board member. With the changes that are happening, not just with the title, but the commission itself, the board, may have some changes in the future, which might include membership. So we'll have to revisit that if that happens.
All right, thank you. So anyone want to, what's that mean? Yeah, you're starting. And I was going to start, but the chair is not always supposed to start, so.
Well, I appreciate all the applicants coming in today. And I want to say, from my perspective, and I'll just throw it out there, you know, in terms of the experience and the relative experience, Bruce definitely brings that. But he's not here today. So I kind of, I want to give deference to those folks who made it. And I think I do know Julie very well. I think she's done an amazing amount of work on this particular infrastructure, has done it for a long time, knows all the issues, knows the players. So I would elevate her. And then I think, you know, labor is important. And I think we, there is, there is, there is a conversation to have labor at the table. And I think that that's also really important as well. So those are my, those are my thoughts on there. So right now, I'm a Julie at the top of my list currently.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I appreciate, it looks like Julie's done a lot of work on the northern end. This thing is predominantly on the southern end, and that concerns me. But she's got a lot, well, it's, well.
What I don't know what you mean by that, because there's a lot of work to be done all over the place.
Oh, no, no, no. And that's great. It sounds like she's doing it on that northern end. The Great Redwood Trail is his new acquisition. And I, and I, and I like what Bruce has brought to the table. I didn't get a chance to talk to Julie. She left me a message, though. I did talk with Jeff, and it's not political, because he didn't, they didn't support me in the last election, so that's good for me. But I do believe, I do believe labor is important. I think that's going to be a big part of it. I also think a layman's approach to it, rather than somebody that knows everything, somebody coming in that can ask a lot of questions and stuff like that. So I'm going to, I'm surprising myself here. I'm going to lean towards Jeff.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. So I wanted to thank all the applicants. Also, it's a lot of time out of someone's life to volunteer and to really take to heart the issues and read the materials and commit yourself, especially for a two-year seat. And with a new entity coming in, it's going to be a lot of work. I also am leaning towards Jeff, just for the labor portion of the knowledge that he would bring forward, I think is really important. And I do value everybody's, all applicants' discussion points, but that's where I'm leaning at this time.
Supervisor Madron, did you want to say, and then I'll talk?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Bass. Well, I have to say, it's an amazing thing that's happening here, the conversion of the railroad to a trail for economic development. And really enjoyed meeting with landowners in the Eel River Canyon with Supervisor Bushnell. Of course, she's a rancher in that community as well. And along with Jason Lyles and John Hashcheck from Mendocino County. And it was a really nice first meeting, I would say, with those landowners, to let them know that we understand that this trail, in some cases, runs right in front of some people's porches, and et cetera, and that we're going to need to really work closely with those landowners to make sure that we understand their concerns, dogs, fires, you name it. And that's the same thing we did in McKinleyville, not nearly as rural as the Eel River Canyon. But we worked very closely with the landowners along the Hammond Trail as well. So I know that's a really important thing. I want to take this opportunity to thank Richard Marx, who served on the North Coast Railroad Authority Board for 10 years. He rarely missed a meeting. And he is a harbor commissioner, and he's going to be leaving the area. So that's partly why this appointment has come up. But Richard did an incredible job of not only representing, you know, the community, because this is a community position, but also representing labor. I think he really did a great job of bringing that to the table. I know Julie well. I think she's an incredible person, incredibly knowledgeable, hard worker, as she said. I mean, it's so interesting, when people retire, that doesn't mean they stop doing things. And she has been at almost every Hammond Trail, Trail Stewards Volunteer Day, helping to maintain the trails. And these volunteer organizations are huge in helping the county take on more of these projects, because we may have the money from the state or wherever to build these trails, but maintaining them is a whole nother ballgame. And it's the Humboldt Trails Council and their Trail Stewards Program that's really stepped up to provide those services to help the county in this effort. So I feel very strongly that Julie would make a great candidate. I think, you know, Bruce also brings a lot of that to the table as a member of the Trails Council, et cetera. But I have worked closely with Jeff, and I appreciate that as a community member and a representative of labor, he brings that to the table. So like Supervisor Bushnell and Bone, I'm leaning strongly towards Jeff as the appointee. But I want to thank all the applicants, because, you know, we don't always get this. Sometimes, right now, I think later in the agenda, we have a report on our, all the other committees and groups that we have. And there's a lot of vacancies. And it's not easy to get people, as Supervisor Bushnell said, to step up and take this time on in volunteering. This is an unpaid position. And we meet, well, it used to be quarterly, but we're stepping it up to meeting monthly, because there is a lot going on. The State Coastal Conservancy is taking over administrative services and management, and they are an incredibly well-honed machine in terms of building and funding trails, et cetera. So I want to thank all the applicants for stepping up and being willing to fill this position. So thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. And, yeah, I think a lot of it's already been said. You know, I, it sounds like we had great applicants, but I too feel that Jeff, from my, from my perspective, would be a really good fit from a different, a couple different perspectives. You know, and I truly hope the trail is successful, and I hope it all happens. If it doesn't, if something really weird happens, and there's opportunity for something else to happen out there, I think labor is going to be a part of it, no matter, no matter what, you know. So that, I think that it's good to have Jeff involved. And Richard Marx was one of Jeff's references. So I did, we didn't hold that against Jeff. I think, I think that's pretty good. No, I appreciate everything that Richard did. Really sorry to see him leaving. So yes, that's where I stand. And I know Supervisor Wilson asked, you were next.
Is there public comment anymore?
There would be, if you'd like.
Yeah, can we do that?
Okay.
And then I'll come in.
Okay. So do we have anyone on the phone to make public comment?
No, Madam Chair, nobody has their hand raised.
All right. And there's no one in the public for public comment. I'll go back to Supervisor, hold on, Supervisor Wilson, Bushnell, then Madron.
I just wanted to make the motion to appoint Jeff Hunter Latch as our representative on the new GRTA. Second?
All right. And Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I just also wanted to just touch back on the labor part. We just had the ceremony last Friday at the Hammond Bridge over the Mad River. $5 million, probably ultimately a $7 million project. And I believe we got 5.9 or so from this federal money that Congressman Huffman worked very hard to get for us. That's going to involve a lot of labor, cranes and all kinds of incredible things in order to remove that bridge safely with its lead paint peeling off, et cetera. But this project, too, this is going to be hundreds of millions of dollars to build this trail system. And it won't happen all at once. The urban parts are happening first, and then the rural parts will come later. But this is an incredible opportunity for our community in terms of jobs, in particular for local hire, you know, for the opportunity for our local labor unions and others to be involved in an amazing effort over the next 10, 15 years. So just wanted to thank labor for being in our community and working hard to create these living wage jobs. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell? Any other comments? Supervisor Wilson?
Just that our, what we're voting on here doesn't say Jeff Hunter Latch on the, I don't see it on the.
I have it on the motion up there.
Oh, you have it on, it was just not on the thing in front of us. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Have to look behind me.
All right, a motion passes unanimously. Thank you for those who are on, who have applied, and thank you those who could be here with us. And Jeff, thank you for your service into the future on this, on this committee.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being willing.
All right. So, next, we're gonna go on to, that one got pulled, are we at the public hearing? Is that the first, the first public hearing from County CEO's office? Because didn't H2 got pulled?
That is correct Chair Bass.
Okay, so that moves us to the first public hearing, comes to us from the CAO's office, and is to consider adoption of an ordinance for the 2022 update of the Humboldt County Schedules Fees and Changes, uh, Fees and Charges, and at this time, I'm going to open up the hearing, and I'd like to ask County Council to introduce the ordinance.
Thank you Chair, before your board is an ordinance amending and updating the Humboldt County Schedule of Fees and Charges for Permits and Services of the various Humboldt County Departments.
Thank you, welcome Tabitha.
Thank you, so I think as we load up the, the fairly brief presentation, good morning, Chair Bass and members of the board, Tabitha Miller, I am the Assistant County Administrative Officer CFO, and we are presenting the Fiscal Year 2022 Fee Schedule for Possible Adoption today. Do I need to do anything?
No, can you just tell me the title of your updated one, was that at 9:37 this morning?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there's only two there, but it should be the. Perfect, thank you.
We had issues with it yesterday, so.
Yeah, I know it didn't work the last time I tried to use it, you, if, I'll, thank you, if you'll just move forward. So, the authority for counties to establish, increase, or decrease fees and charges comes from the California Government Code, specifically, the first section is Section 54985, which allows counties to set fees and charges to recover the reasonably necessary cost for providing the service product or for enforcing a regulation, there is a second code section which specifically addresses establishing and updating planning and land use fees, they're very similar in, in how they are processed, the idea is basically to recover the cost of providing the service, there are a few differences, and we'll talk a little bit about effective dates, and some of the other differences are just how you would challenge those fees, but the reason we're here today is that both sections require at least one public hearing, and there are, just to be clear, while these sections apply to establishing fees to recover the reasonable cost, there are additional fees throughout the fee schedule that are set by federal or state regulation, and they don't have the same ability for the county to set those according to the cost of providing the service. Nikki, if you could move forward one. So, probably one of the biggest differences is just the effective date, so for all of the fees excluding our planning and building fees, those are effective 30 days after, no more than, no sooner than 30 days after adoption, it is the county policy to put those in effect the following Monday, which would be May 16, 2022, and then 30 days later, the planning and building fees would be effective, and that happens to fall on June 11, which is a Saturday, so we're moving that to June 13, which is a Monday, that would be the date for the planning and building fees. Nikki, if you could move, thank you. So, the graph here is just really a nice overview of where the fees are at, if you go through the spreadsheet, the 32 pages in the spreadsheet that itemizes the fees, you'll see that there are 1,231 total fees, there are 42 of those that are being deleted, and we'll discuss those in a little more detail in a couple of slides, leaving 1,181 fees before you today, there are seven of those that are decreasing, and 256 that are increasing, which is again about 74%, and there are 15 new fees, just a couple things to let you know, 71% of all the increasing fees have a less than 10% increase, and 30% of the increases are less than $5 each. Nikki, if you'd move forward, thank you. The trends this year are very similar to what's happened over the last five years, you can see that as a typical standard, the vast majority of the fees have no changes from year to year, there are a small number of new fees, typically those are services that have come on board, or things that have changed over time, there's a decent number of increases, and you'll notice if you look at the years and the trends there, that it does seem to follow the economy, and even this year in 2022, one of the reasons that we're seeing increases in fees is our increased cost of labor, with the recent negotiations of the MOUs, and also just increasing outside costs, so it's not surprising that we're seeing those changes, and then a very small number of fees are decreasing. Thank you. Just a little bit more specific on the departments that have new fees, there are only 15, but it's also not surprising that cannabis planning, regular planning, aviation enterprise would be the ones that would have the most fees, these happen to be the departments that actually overall have the most fees in the fee schedule, your planning and building department has 149 before deletions, and aviation has 123, which is about 10%, both of these departments are, are expected to pay for themselves through fees and services, so that's, that's kind of in line with the services they're providing, and our airports specifically are set up as enterprise funds, which sort of has the caveat or the understanding that they will be fully supported by user fees. This is a list of the 263 fees with changes, just a reminder, 256 are increases, and seven are decreases, again, you'll see that the, the significant departments with those changes are building inspection, cannabis planning and planning, which is our planning and building department, and then our aviation, and, and, you know, there's, just generally keeping up with cost is the reason for these changes. And departments with deleted fees, so typically, these are gonna be cleanup or obsolete fees that are changing, that are being taken off of our fee schedule, there is a little bit of a difference this year, and I'm gonna kind of point you to the right-hand side, sheriff, probation, jail, drug court, and conflict council, part of the reason that there are 42 of these this year, in, which is a little bit higher than normal, is the result of Senate Bill 1869, Nikki, if you'll move forward, thank you, so this was signed into law in the fall of 2020, and what it did is it repealed the authority of county, counties to collect a number of criminal fees associated with the cost of the criminal justice system, typical fees that are included in these that are no longer allowed are the cost of providing counsel, booking and arrest fees, home detention, probation and payroll, parole supervision, work furlough, and voluntary work release programs are all no longer allowed to be charged by the county, the bill itself really focused on the fact that 80% of Californians in jail are indigent, and that people exiting jail or prison have a tendency to face higher rates of unemployment and homelessness, the, citing kind of the impact on the family unification, or reoffending those folks who are coming out of jail, trying to give them a little bit more of a break, the good news is that Senate Bill 1869 did backfill the law, some of the lost revenue to counties, there's $65 million annually that's set aside through 25, 20, 2025, 2026, to reimburse counties for some of that lost revenue, so, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
As the Chair has had to step out for a minute, I'll step in as Vice Chair, are there any questions?
I'm back.
Oh, she's back, there we go, that was a brief.
That was a great job, thank you very much.
All right, any questions? Supervisor Wilson?
I don't, I don't have any questions, I just appreciate the work that goes into updating this every year, and just the analysis into that, and, yeah, I mean, I went through the list, nothing seemed unusual or out of date to me, so, thanks.
All right, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair, Tabitha, I happen to know you were in here all weekend working on this, and just really want to thank you for your efforts and your communication with departments, and all the efforts you've made, it's greatly appreciated, thank you for the offer to meet with myself, I'm sure the rest of this board, if we had any discussions, thank you.
All right. Anyone else, so, is there anyone on the phones Nikki?
Madam Chair, I don't have any callers, with their hands raised.
All right, we will go to in-person public comment, is anyone in the audience who cares to comment on this item? All right, apparently not, with that, we'll go back to the board, and, there's a motion that can be made?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all right, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, I'll just do a roll call.
Is that good for you Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
No, you have to hit join, you hit, you hit view instead.
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Bushnell? Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
All right, so we're gonna close that public hearing, thank you very much, Tabitha, and move on to our second public hearing, comes to us from Planning and Building, and is regarding Humboldt Ranch Incorporated General Plan Amendment and Zone Reclassification Petition, so at this time, I'm opening the public hearing, and I'll look at, look to staff.
Thank you Chair Bass, good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with Cliff Johnson and Stephen Santos, to present this petition for a general plan amendment and rezone for Humboldt Ranch, this is a petition, a petition, it's getting hard for me to say this morning, where the Board of Supervisors have the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to accept an application for this general plan amendment and rezone, the case is to resolve an existing subdivision violation that was identified as part of the review of the cannabis permit, the petition is not in keeping with either the general plan or the zoning in the assigned areas, staff's recommending that the board deny the petition, Mr. Santos will now describe the specifics associated with this case.
I think I opened the public hearing, I did, right, when I called it up? Yes, I did. Okay. Ex parte communication? All right.
So, I'd like to identify that about, I think, five or six months ago, this applicant came to me, as I'm his supervisor, and it's in my district, with his concerns, I listened and did not have a discussion either way with the applicant, but did have a conversation where he was prominently talking to me.
Okay, thank you, I was gonna say, and this is a petition only to move forward with the, something, so, yeah, but, but thank you for, for sharing that piece of information. All right, Mr. Santos?
Chair Bass, members of the board, good morning, I'm Stephen Santos, Senior Planner, presenting the Humboldt Ranch General Plan and Zoning Reclass Petition, I believe there's a brief PowerPoint.
Since I don't know that that clicker's working, I'll be your clicker.
Okay, please advance to the title slide. All right, as announced, this is the Humboldt Ranch General Plan and Zoning Reclassification Petition, next slide please. We have a 29-acre assessor parcel in the Breslin area, this is the parcel subject to the petition, next slide please. The purpose of the petition is to change the general plan designation from RA40 to RA20, which would reduce the minimum density from 40 acres to 20 acres, the zone reclass petition would change the FRB 540 combining zone, the B540 combining zone, to B520, which would reduce the minimum parcel size from 40 acres to 20 acres, as Director Ford mentioned, the re, the purpose of this petition is to resolve a subdivision violation, this parcel was created by deed in 2001 without going through the, the local and state subdivision process, next slide please. This is an excerpt from the County GIS showing the current zoning, and we see a large area of intact FRB 540, I also want to bring the board's attention to the nearby unclassified zones, those are scheduled to be rezoned as part of the implementation of the general plan, to also have a B540 combining zone, next slide please. This slide shows the surrounding general plan land use designations, and again, we see a very large intact area designated RA40, 40 acre minimum, the only area within this vicinity that has the RA5 to 20 designation, which would have a smaller parcel size, is directly along the Breslin-Thorn Road corridor, next slide please. To approve the petition, one of the findings the board needs to make is that the petition is in the public interest, or is not appropriate for the next scheduled general plan update, very similar findings need to be made to grant the petition for the zoning amendment, there needs to be a finding that it is in the public interest and consistent with the general plan, staff analysis has concluded that the finding of public interest cannot be made, that this may actually be contrary to the public interest, in that it's, it's an unusual pathway to resolve a subdivision violation, it would likely encourage more petitions, not just in the vicinity, but countywide, to use this pathway to resolve subdivision violations, it also presents equity issues for other landowners who have gone through the subdivision process to correct their, their subdivision violations, and for those reasons and others, staff recommendation is to reject the petition, I'm now available for questions.
Are there any questions? Yes Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair, what would be the options otherwise?
The, one option would be for the two parcels that were created in 2001 to be merged back into one parcel, or the parcel that is subject to the petition could join with other surrounding parcels to meet that 40 acre minimum.
But the parcel, the parcel in question is owned, the surrounding parcels are owned by the same applicant?
No, I don't think they are.
How would you merge them, if they're individual owners?
That would have to be negotiated between private parties, and that is typically how that's done.
And you would do a lotline adjustment if, accordingly?
A lotline adjustment could be part of the mix if that pathway was chosen.
So, the, the suggestion would be that, that the other landowners around would make negotiations with each other to make those parcels the, the standard?
That approach is what is typically used to resolve subdivision violations such as this, and has been used to resolve other subdivision violations in this vicinity, yeah, merging and creating the minimum parcel size.
Do you know if the applicant has asked the surrounding landowners, and if they are willing, because if they're not willing, what would be the alternative?
That's an, that's an excellent question, I, I believe there have been some negotiations, but the specific details, I've not been participating in those, so I cannot report, report on those, and so, and I have no alternatives to suggest at this time.
Well, I, I would be, because the, I believe the landowner bought the parcels in this size, in this form, is that correct, or do you know?
I don't, I don't know.
So, without knowing or having the knowledge of what could be an alternative, I don't, I don't see an option for him if we don't have, if we haven't asked those questions, Director Ford, do you know?
So, I would just say, this is an extremely unfortunate situation, obviously, if somebody buys a piece of property that was not created legally, I had this conversation with somebody yesterday, that, you know, it's the anticipation that a title report would pick up that the parcel didn't, was not created in conformance with the Subdivision Act, with county ordinances, and is therefore illegal, that doesn't seem to happen, I, I think the fact that this is a really difficult circumstance, where the parcel was created in such a manner, is now substandard, and then the board is being asked to consider a petition for a rezone and general plan amendment, that is clearly inconsistent with what the general plan and zoning call for in the area, whether or not that kind of a regulatory fix is really something the board should consider, taking the emotion out of it for a moment, and what people think are fair, it really is the general plan and the zoning that guide how development should occur, should, that guides how land subdivisions should occur, and the fact of the matter is here, is at some point. And the fact of the matter is here is at some point in the past, not these people's doing, the parcel was illegally subdivided.
On purchase, when things are being purchased and they're illegal, in illegal subdivisions such as this, or not correct, what would be, how does that happen? Why wouldn't it be, have been fixed at the time of purchase or suggested fixed?
Because it was not flagged as part of the sale process.
And that responsibility lies to who?
I would say that that really lies in the responsibility of disclosure by the real estate agent and I, and the title company.
I have a, a difficult time denying when we don't have any alternatives. The, the idea would be to fix these, right?
Well, the idea is to fix it, and the primary fix, as Mr. Santos pointed out, that's allowable in the Subdivision Map Act is, is to restore to acreage. In this particular case, the, the original parcel was 55 acres. It was never going to be able to be split into two parcels legally.
I understand that, but we haven't communicated with the landowners that surround to know if that is feasible?
I, I, I don't think we've had that conversation with them.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, and I actually, we'll, we'll get to that. There's a lot more from land use planning that we can probably, we'll be talking about, I think, in a few moments here. But since this is a little different, and it's in, it's not in a, like, permit application at this point, should we still at least have the, can the applicant come up and, and, you know, share their thoughts? That's why I was trying to do that first, and then, so if that's okay Supervisor Madron, you all right? If they come up first and do their comment, or? Okay, well, why don't we, I think they, we can hear what the applicant has to say, and then we can ask them questions and...
Hello Board. Thank you so much for the time to address this issue. Nate Madsen, Rainan Zep, on behalf of the applicant. I would just like to, right off the bat, say the victims of this situation are all in this room. The county is suffering a violation of their rules and regulations. Our client had no hand in that. The subdivision violation was performed in 2001. Our client purchased the property in 2014. That was subsequent to three, after the subdivision violation transactions. They went through a typical escrow. They purchased title insurance. They did all of the due diligence that would be expected of a purchaser, and still ended up with a clouded title, if you will. So we just want to acknowledge that everybody in this room is in the same position, having suffered a harm from a wrongdoer who is not here, cannot be compelled to be here by us or the county. And to answer some of your questions Supervisor Bushnell, yes, there were negotiations, not just with the historic parcels seeking to merge it back to its original condition. That did happen. But with each and every adjoining parcel in every direction. And there just isn't a willing seller. I mean, Elk Ridge is a highly desirable location to live. People love their homes there. Our client loves their home. The adjacent landowners love their homes, and they're not, you know, people aren't willing to sell. People are also not interested in getting married to their neighbor. You know, merging the parcel and then somehow negotiating some kind of management agreement. We've broached that subject with each and every adjoining parcel. We just haven't, there just isn't a deal. And this is the last final alternative that the client has available to them to resolve this issue. And what we're asking you here today to do is not approve the subdivision or the general plan modification. We're just looking for a permission to develop more information, to get more input from staff, and see if there is a viable path here. We're just looking for the nod to possibly get there. And this is, this is the only option we have available to us at this time. I, staff has indicated that they think that an approval of the board today would encourage this path to other people with subdivision violations, and I would strongly disagree with that assertion. A merger would be a much simpler, shorter, easy solution to this problem. We agree with that. We just don't have that option. So yeah, we, we, and we would love to see a resolution to all the violations in this region. One of the maps that did not go up was, which we did provide in our petition, includes 10 or 15 of the neighboring nearby parcels are in similar circumstance. And so yes, we would love to see a situation where all of these issues can be resolved at once, but we don't have the power to compel that. We're just looking to address the one issue that we can address. We're not looking to change any use. The proposal is looking to maintain the exact same use and designations, the RA and the FRB-5. We're not looking to change any of that, just the minimum parcel size. And we're very close to the minimum parcel size as designated, but in violation, and therefore we need this modification. The resources would be protected the same. The conditions necessary to meet the zoning and general plan designations that we're seeking do exist. I can run through the details, but I'm, I'm interested in conserving your time. And what we're really looking forward here is the nod to move forward and get more information, and come back with a, ideally, an approvable resolution to a problem that we otherwise can't resolve. So, thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm more than available and happy to help.
Supervisor Bushnell? Why didn't a few had questions, or if you just wanted to speak regarding? Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. If we do, we'll, we'll call you back up.
Yep, I'll be here. Thank you.
Okay, so then Supervisor Madron, and then Bushnell.
Thank you Chair. So Mr. Santos, in your presentation, you mentioned that these nonconforming parcels were created by deed. Was that patent parcel, or what do you mean by, by deed? In their creation? They didn't go through a subdivision process, so they were created by deed?
Basically, what that refers to is that somebody drew up some kind of a legal description and created a deed for the ownership of that parcel, and just sold a piece of the parcel. So it was not consistent with the Subdivision Map Act. It was just done.
So they weren't patent parcels?
No.
In fact, just to take a- Paper parcel, or whatever, yeah.
Take a step further back, because unfortunately, even the 55 acre parcel was originally created illegally.
Also?
Yep.
From a 160 or something, 640, whatever?
Yep.
So a number of those things happened on that ridge? Is that, because I heard Mr. Madsen say that there's other nearby parcels that are also equally undersized based on general plan and zoning?
If we were to evaluate all those parcels, there's a high probability that many of them were created outside the subdivision map pack process.
Again, probably because it was a highly desirable location, and so people started splitting things up smaller. In our general plan update, there were a lot of different mitigation measures that were included as part of the IR to do that. My understanding, and you can perhaps confirm this or, or correct it, was that one of those mitigation measures was to develop a merger ordinance for Humboldt County. Most counties have merger ordinances because of this kind of a situation whereby, you know, there's this particular case here, and then there's the bigger picture, right? And the bigger picture is that we don't have merger ordinance here in Humboldt County, and so these things will keep coming to us. Implementing a merger ordinance isn't easy, because in many cases, you may have people that are not interested in merging, right? If you have multiple parcels under one ownership, then that merger ordinance could absolutely affect those parcels in, in the way that aligns with our general plan and our zoning. And of course, when the general plan was done, we really didn't think about the high fire severity issues out in the hills. Those things have become far more prominent in the last four or five years as well. And I know, you know, there's been a lot of talk about this issue of where we should be placing people. Are we putting people in arms' way, et cetera? But is that true that we do have, that is a mitigation measure of our general plan, is to develop that merger ordinance?
I haven't looked at that for a while. You may be correct. I would need to go back. I don't want to tell you something absolutely true or false, but I think that that is something that was addressed-
Right.
-in, in the general plan.
Right, and, and it was addressed in the sense that we recognize that in order to minimize impact, that was something we probably ought to be implementing. And I know your office is way, weighed down with so many different issues. And you brought up in your report the other day, yesterday, on the budget update, all these different things that you're working on. And there's just so many pieces to this whole puzzle. You know, I wish there was a way to try and make this work, because when you get an owner come in, and they do their due diligence, and somehow or another, the, the real estate agent, the seller, the title company, nobody catches these things. It, it just seems so unfair to the, the owner who bought something, and due to no fault of their own, they've ended up in this pickle, basically. And obviously, they do, I would assume, have some recourse with the real estate agent and the seller in regards to unfair disclosure, but I'm not a real estate agent or a lawyer, so I don't know. But that certainly seems to be an issue, and I suspect this won't be the last time this happens. Wasn't it just a week or so ago that we were dealing with the Heinley Ranch issue, where there are also a lot of nonconforming parcels in terms of size based on the ordinance and the zoning? So this isn't the only situation like this around the county. We've got a lot of this, right, all over. I mean, the whole Heinley subdivision has that happening, for the most part. So I'm not quite sure how we deal with that longer-term issue, but I do have to say that it, it just, as much as I want to follow our general plan and our zoning, I just, it seems so unfortunate for a person who's done their due diligence and ends up in this kind of a pickle. And I don't know what the solution is, or what we need to do here, or what's appropriate, but I do sympathize with somebody being in that situation. And in particular, because we're not talking about a change in use here. It's already pretty much existing. So I, I recognize your recommendation is to deny, and I really don't know where I fall on this issue, but I just wanted to share those thoughts with you and the applicant and our board, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr. Santos, the, if we go forward with what they, they're wanting, is the idea then to find things that may work, from my understanding from the attorney?
If the petition were to be granted, and we moved forward with an actual application to change the general plan designation and zoning, it is staff's opinion at this time, based on what has been reviewed so far, that we would not be able to support a recommendation of approval for that, for that application. One of the, the issues that Supervisor Madron brought up had to do with hazards. Under the general plan policies, the RA 40 and above designations are intended for areas that have high hazard potential. And this particular parcel has the highest hazard for geologic instability. It has the second highest hazard for fire severity. And so, for reasons such as that, at this point in time, staff believes that it would not be able to recommend approval of a subsequent application.
So, so what, without an, without an option, these, these parcels just hang out there? And what, and what happens? Like, how do we fix this long-term? And where do we start? And if we don't start here, where do we start?
One option, and it was mentioned by the applicant's agent, that there are other parcels in the vicinity that have also been illegally subdivided that are below this minimum. And so if the board were to decide that this was an appropriate policy pathway to address this kind of situation, probably the better way to do it would be to do it on an area basis, rather than on a spot basis or an individual parcel one at a time, and do it as part of, of a general plan update.
How long does that take?
Last general plan update took a long time, plenty of years.
It's a loaded question Supervisor Bushnell. It is, it depends on a couple of things. It depends on the priority that it's given. It depends on the willingness of the property owners to actively participate in the process. You know, we could probably, if everything went well, something like that can be done in six months. But nothing ever goes perfectly. And so it's realistically probably a year, a year process.
Okay, so Supervisor Madron had reference to the, is it Heinley, the one out in? That was done, was that done before the general plan? And so do you know, so that was before, correct? So do you know was, was this area, I remember this was a, a larger ranch that was cut down. Do you know if this area was done before that, or was it done after?
So this was done after the zoning was in place. Heinley Ranch, I want to be real clear on that, because there's a little bit of confusion. When that original subdivision was approved, it was not approved with substandard parcels. It was approved under an FR zone with a no, without a minimum parcel size.
Okay.
So everything that was created out there at the time was completely in compliance with land use and zoning. The Planning Commission recognized the limitations on the area, and as a condition of approval required that the property be rezoned to AE with a B6 overlay, that B6 referring to the map that would be recorded, and saying those building areas are all that can be approved in this area. So that's a little bit of different circumstance.
So when this area was done and split, and the parcels were created illegally, that didn't come through the Planning Department for approval?
No.
So how did, so that happened through title companies?
That happened by somebody going and recording basically a deed, saying that now there's this parcel, we just sold it, these people now own it. That's completely not reviewed by the Planning and Building Department.
Okay, thank you.
I had Supervisor Wilson, and then Bone, and then Madron?
Appreciate that. And I, I want to remind us, and I think what staff has said, which is that we have to make findings to approve this. I don't believe the findings are enumerated in the staff report. Those findings would have to be that this is in the public's best interest. I'm not sure how we enumerate that today. So I think we should be careful of where we take this under that, those conditions. One of the things I think that also, part, some of these come up, and I'm not saying this one necessarily, but under cannabis permitting, this happens. And so what happens in, in maybe in this case, but what happens is that, that you are basically, they're seeking another, an additional entitlement. And so there actually is an, an additional entitlement that is being sought, and is a land use change that's potentially happening here. And we would have to take that into consideration, that potential for another entitlement. And is that in the public's best interest? Is it in that watershed's best interest? Is it in the best interests of those, of the neighborhood in general? And so that would be something we'd have to, you know, consider. It is interesting, and I, is, is, is these folks, everyone pays this thing called title insurance. I have never heard of any title insurance actually getting anything out of anything, ever. I, I tell people someday I just might have to start a title insurance company, because it seems like all you do is get money, and you never actually pay it out, as far as I can tell. But, but I think in this case, and then maybe John can, can enumerate, the title insurance only really covers, we, can you remind me one more, the deed itself, right?
And the chain of title.
The chain of title.
Yep.
So this is a, this is a paper title. I mean, sure, I can, I can, I can sell property, I suppose, illegally in some regards, and it just happens, and then it just kind of runs along with the thing. I also want to, there, there's this notion that we have to solve this today. And I, I think that, that I, I don't believe that it is under our, it's not our responsibility to solve this landowner's issue. It's not our responsibility to solve it, and it's not our responsibility to necessarily solve it today. And if we choose to take staff recommendation, then all of those options still exist out there. Just because the adjacent landowners today are not amenable to that, that doesn't mean they don't deal with it later. And it also impacts, you know, frankly, the- And it also impacts, you know, frankly, the, the negotiation in both directions, and that's up to them. When people buy cars that are lemons, it's not our responsibility to, to adjudicate that. And in this case, I feel like if you buy a piece of property that's a lemon, it's, it's not our responsibility, uh, uh, to, to do that, uh, on the individual basis. That doesn't mean, I don't have, uh, I do feel terrible for people who buy properties that have these, um, these issues associated with them. This isn't the only issue that people buy, that, that, you know, you buy a house, and oftentimes, there's all kinds of things that you discover later that you have to pay for, and, and it happens, and you're not, you know, we're not going off to the, to the, to the jurisdiction and asking for, uh, uh, you know, to, to adjudicate that. And so I, I just, from my perspective, I don't see this, I don't see moving this petition forward as in the public's best interest in the current context today. I do believe what John and staff has put forward as the option of looking forward to a general plan amendment, or a general plan, you know, overlay in the future, working with all the neighbors, is something that I think is a reasonable consideration, and, and especially if there are other parcels like this. But in today's context, um, I think the responsible thing for us to do would be to go with staff recommendation.
All right, then I have Supervisor Bone, then Madron, then Bushnell.
Yeah, I find myself agreeing with Supervisor Wilson. Um, I do, I do know this, the statement would say that we're placing people in harm's way, and I think as a governing body and stuff like that, we try to work with people to help people be placed where they want to be. I don't think we're placing people in harm's way. It's our job to look at it and, and evaluate it, and let them evaluate it at the same time, but it's, it's like selling a ticket on a, on a roller coaster or anything else. I don't, you know, or, or snow skiing or anything like that. We're not, we're not telling them or placing them, we're, we're, we're trying to work with them to allow them to be where they're at. So I just, that's a point of clarification that comes up, I repeatedly hear. And as far as this goes, they've had discussions, they've had repeated discussions. I know title insurance covers you mainly for liens, and as we're finding out, these paper copies are made by a, we, we saw it in Southern Humboldt with a very large subdivision down there, and, and, and we've been chasing and fighting, and twenty-five years later, we haven't fixed it yet, and we can make a whole bunch more rules, and then there'll be more addendums to those rules, and maybe less rules would be better. I've mentioned that twice today now. But, like, they all tend to be the Lawyer's Full Employment Act anytime we make a rule, no offense, you guys. But as, as we move forward, and we, we tend to tell the plant, "Can you guys, can you guys get that to us in three weeks?" And we're kind of forgetting that the whole idea is, is we need to get some other things done that are already on the plate before adding more, as it was stated that they're short-staffed. Every department is short-staffed. I just, I was hoping in the last two days, somebody'd come up and say, "Hey, well, I got too many people, does anybody want them?" But that didn't happen, so I don't know how we address this exactly, but there's a lot of these parcels, as, as was stated, are out there. And as Supervisor Wilson said, if you buy a car and it goes bad, you don't come back to the county, you do go to Consumer Affairs, but if you buy it from a private party, these things are going to happen. And I hope we can, uh, help these, you know, help get through the situation more, make it more palatable. But everybody likes living in their houses up there, everybody loves their piece of property. We're getting to the point now that they aren't able to do a certain segment of business now that they would like to do on that parcel. And I don't know if that's our job to fix that, um, or to make more rules to fix it, but I think that's why we're sitting here. You're telling us it can't be fixed. I got, and Nate, I appreciate the email, you're making it sound like, "Just approve this, and we'll get it all worked out." Well, if we stay where we're at, you simplified it a lot in the email. But I'm, I'm just saying, they're going to have to work it out. Somebody's going to have to work it out, and, um, I don't know if that's, as Supervisor Wilson said, I don't know if that's our job. Because do we change six laws to make one law work, or thirteen parcels here, thirteen parcels there? I mean, it's, we can keep, we can chase our tail all day.
All right, I have Supervisor Madron, then Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair. Couple questions, couple comments. What happens to the parcel if we don't do anything? It still exists, is that correct? But they just aren't going to be able to get their cannabis applications? Is that my understanding?
That's true.
Okay. You know, Supervisor Bone brought up, I believe you were talking about the Tubi Ranch subdivision, and how that one went about with some paper deeds, so to speak. It wasn't subdivided either, although there were some patents involved there, I believe, but not entirely. And then we've got the Burellis subdivision up on Titlow Hill, which was a, uh, paper deeds, so to speak, wasn't, definitely was not patents. He chose to do a bunch of forty-acre cookie cutters, which had nothing to do with the original patents. And, and so it created what we call, what, shaded parcels, or, or whatever? I really believe, I mean, if I'm correct, that the merger ordinance was in fact a mitigation measure within the EIR for the general plan update, it would seem to me that we really need to move forward on that. And I know staffing is absolutely an issue, so, uh, I, I sympathize or understand that issue. But the longer we wait to do the merger ordinance, the more these parcels are going to continue to have different ownerships, and become more and more difficult in the future to merge them. The longer we wait, the more difficult that solution will become. And I know there are probably a lot of people that don't want to see their parcels merged, but if they have common ownership, and that was what we used to help approve the general plan, I think there's some vulnerability there at the county level that we really need to tighten up. So I appreciate if you look into that, and come back to us with recommendations on long-term planning, on how we might, uh, get that started, because as I said, the sooner we do that, the less problems we're going to have. But where we have situations like this, where there isn't common ownership, it becomes really difficult. And I recognize what you said, Mr. Santos, that even if we as a board were to go ahead and, and recommend moving forward with the petition, which doesn't do anything today except have planning look into a general plan and rezoning, uh, effort, as you said, you wouldn't be able to support that. You know, your sense is that the planning department, based on our existing general plan and zoning, would not be able to provide a recommendation to support that. And then we talked about geology, we talked about, uh, fire, and fire has certainly become a far greater issue out in, uh, in the hills in that sense. But again, those can be mitigated, and if people are already living there, what, what if a property only came forward wanting to petition and do these things, and they were willing to get a geologic report that showed that the house and the curtilage and the structures were in sound, on sound ground? Because the whole, the whole forty acres or twenty acres isn't necessarily a high geologic hazard, although in some cases it can be. So that's where one could do a geologic report, to be able to identify that, well, in this case, the house site, the curtilage, the road access are generally in stable ground. I don't know that that's the case or not, I have no idea. I do know there's a lot of unstable ground, especially on these meadow systems. They're meadows because the ground is slowly moving, right? To a large degree, it may also have to do with fire ha, uh, fire incidents, uh, shallow soils, other kinds of things can add to open prairie lands. The other thing is, what if the landowner was saying that, "I'm going to take my twenty acres and do fuel reduction all over the entire property. I'm going to limb everything up, I'm going to thin things up, and create a really low fire hazard in a high severity fire area," right? So I mean, there are ways for a homeowner to mitigate for geologic hazard and for fire hazard. And I would think that that might be a way forward. I'm certainly not trying to argue for doing this or not doing this, I'm just trying to think it through. And what would it take? In particular, in a case where somebody already has a home, and they're already there? I'm not saying that necessarily would give them the additional entitlement to cannabis or anything else, but I just, it just is a very unfortunate situation. I think everybody in the room probably would agree with that. But at the same time, you know, we develop these regulations to try and, uh, do good, sound land use planning, and thinking about hazards and things like that. So, uh, I, again, I want to implore us to think about moving forward with the merger ordinance, sooner than later. And other than that, I'm not really quite sure what to do about it, but, uh, because I agree with Supervisor Wilson on many levels, but also, anyway, I've said enough.
All right, Supervisor Bushnell, and then I have a question for staff.
Um, thank you. Um, through the chair, um, either, it probably, the question is for Director Ford, but, uh, Mr. Santos, if you can answer it. How many substandard parcels are there in Humboldt County?
I'm, I'm going to defer.
Roundabout? Shaded or not?
Uh, I mean, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking as much as a thousand or more.
Okay.
There is a lot.
So I, I am going to tend to agree with Supervisor Madron that, um, if we could find some way to start fixing these instead of not. I also am sympathetic to, uh, what Director Ford said about not having enough staff. However, that is not the community or the applicant's fault. And I, I, as the supervisor, feel, um, for you guys, and know that your workloads are heavy. But how, I think that for me, and I, I understand and hear what Supervisor Wilson said, and I think it was for my benefit that he was saying that, um, but I don't see an option here, and for, for this, and this, once again, is very frequent throughout Humboldt County. And what the petition is asking for is to look further into, maybe if something could work. The fire and geology isn't going to change because we changed the zoning. I think those things can be mitigated. Um, the house is still going to be there, the structure's going to be there, maybe the cannabis won't work, but I, I don't know what the, what's the downfall of trying to find a solution through the, through this petition going forward?
That's the, the crux of the question, thank you for asking that. And, and what it really comes down to is whether or not a legislative fix is needed to keep, to address a site-specific concern. And typically, when we allocate land use and zoning, we don't get down to, as Supervisor Madron referenced, how somebody manages their parcel. Those are very coarse, broad kinds of regulations that say, "Here's the umbrella of what we're looking for, and because of the unique constraints in these areas, we're going to have it at certain densities, or because of the intended use, we're going to have it at certain densities." And, and so that's typically a very coarse kind of, um, administration within a county. If the board wanted to start to consider a case-by-case basis, and looking at creating smaller parcel sizes in areas where there are very, uh, profound challenges, whether it be geologic, whether it be wildfire, whether it be water, we can start doing that, but that's a whole different level of analysis than what we have typically done for land use and zoning.
Okay, thank you for that. So this petition is coming forward basically because of cannabis? Or not?
I would say that's true, yes.
Okay, so.
That is correct.
Okay, the attorneys agree. Are they currently, um, are they cultivators currently? They have an interim, but can you explain that?
There is no cultivation occurring.
Oh, there isn't? So they?
There was some pre-existing cultivation, but they do not have an interim permit.
They do not? So the purpose of this would be to continue forward in that path, or do you know?
The cannabis permit cannot move forward until the parcel's legal status is resolved.
Okay. Did they have an interim permit previous?
Yes, they did.
And we suspended that?
It expired.
Oh, it expired, and we didn't renew it because it's substandard?
I don't know the precise reason of, of why it expired, there are multiple reasons on why.
Okay.
Or it expired, it could be unpaid bills or not receiving documentation.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Can I, I'm going to just, like, add a couple of questions, and then Supervisor Madron, then Wilson. All right, so say we did not move forward today. I, I have to say, when I, um, was first on the board, it took a while to try to understand what these things were, because to me, it was like, "Well, sure, let a petition move forward, you know, then we make a decision later." And then finally, it's like, "But you know, it has to be on required findings," and, and, you know, that's where I have a concern, I don't see where we have any of those that we could make today that makes any sense. But, um, so if we did not move forward, and you know, we, we, it talks about getting additional information, and that's one of the reasons, if we did move forward with it, is there any additional information or work that can be done, um, that doesn't require actually moving forward with the petition? I mean, I, because it almost sounds like there's just information that's missing, and does that mean it can be found in other ways? Or does that make any sense? I'm going.
It, it, it does make sense. And I, I would say, I think what Mr. Santos tried to describe is that, as we look forward to a process, we don't see information there that supports this. That's not to say that we wouldn't work with the applicant to develop information, if they got creative and, and did things, and new information came in. But from our professional opinion, we don't see it, right now.
So you're saying if there was some additional information that they were able to bring, then we would do this, we might, we could have this conversation again?
Well, that, that's, there's two approaches here. One is to say, "Yeah, go ahead, see what the applicant can do to try to.
Yeah.
Change the circumstances." Or you could say, "No, the, the petition's not ripe. If you want to come back with something that makes this more acceptable under the findings that are needed to, uh, say, go ahead with the petition, then we would consider it at that time."
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bone wants to know, what's the difference? I hear over, but I see there is a difference.
What's the difference? I mean, it's, you're going to throw it right-handed or left-handed, but the ball's still going to hit the wall. I mean.
Well, the, the, the primary difference is, is that we would start to then spend time and money in processing a general plan amendment and a rezone, whereas if the applicant wanted to go and see if there's something else out there, they could do it off the clock without being charged for it. That's the difference.
And you make that decision sound really easy, and I don't know if it's appropriate if we asked the applicant, what would be?
You could, you could ask. I would say, uh, please come forward and, and, that's fine.
Would either one of those work for you, or do you, you don't get to choose, but I'm asking you to choose, just give us an idea.
Well, we're here because the petition is the only path forward that we've been presented. That's the only option we've got on the table, and that's.
You've heard what's been said here.
Correct.
Is there, does that sound like an easier path, a less?
Any path forward would be easier than this.
Legislative bureaucratic. Well, that, well, then that's, and I'm looking at John going, "You, you've kind of basically thrown a lifeline out there? Two lifelines? One floats better than the other?"
Well, I, 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 there's always a path, we're always willing to work with people. You know, this is a s- situation where I wish I saw that there was a solution here. From a land use planning standpoint, I don't see one. And, and that's where we have to make a professional opinion. And, and the board obviously can completely disagree with the professional recommendation from staff, and, and choose to go a different path. We will work with the applicant to try to make something, try to do something creative, but honestly, we don't see it.
All right, we had Supervisor Wilson, Madron, and Bushnell.
Thank you. I just, you know, the crux of this is the general plan, and the general plan EIR that was reviewed and, you know, voted on by this board, I will not, not necessarily everybody member here. Yeah, but, but, but.
You're stuck with it.
But whatever the board, what, I didn't actually vote for it, to be frank, so.
Yeah, you can just blame us, yeah.
But nonetheless, but nonetheless, it is, it is the sta, it is the standard, standard legislative, uh, uh, body of work that we're working off of. So, um, and, uh, what is being asked of us is to deviate from that, and we have a responsibility to enumerate the public's benefit in that, in that, to do that, and I, I can't, I just, I just can't see it in this context. As much as I have sympathy and empathy for folks that. for folks that are in this situation. So, with that, I'm just gonna make a motion that we, um, go with staff recommendation to, um, to deny this, it's not an application, it's a petition, excuse me, to deny the petition. Looking for a second.
Is there a second this time?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, and so then...
And I'll speak to the motion if I can, which I did a little bit. If, I do see this as problematic. If we do, you know, if we, if we don't deny this, we will see more of these coming, and we will have, and we do have to, um, respect, you know, to a certain degree, it is, we can, we can go against staff recommendation, but understand that this, um, we've seen this before, um, and there's a reason people are, haven't been coming back to us from, in, in this way for quite a while, is because we haven't, it's been denied in the past. And so, um, I can imagine that if we, if we approve, um, this petition, we'll see more petitions, and it will consume a lot of time, and, and we have general plans for a purpose. Um, I just, I just feel like this is, the staff has, has it right on this particular item. Thanks.
Okay, and before I go to Supervisor Madron and Bushnell, I'd like to remind people, if you happen to be watching this at home or from your office, and you know you're gonna wanna comment on this one, please do call in now, the number's on the screen, and press star nine to raise your hand. We currently have one person in there, so I just wanted to make sure that if there's anyone else out there, that they are aware.
[inaudible]
Yeah. All right, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I, I have great sympathy for, for this property owner, I really do. Uh, and this one's not the only one. There are a number of people in this situation, and, you know, the question about how long might things take? Well, the Borellis subdivision has been going on for, what, five years? Try and four years? Seven years or so? Trying to do a general plan change and EIR, zoning updates, and, and it gets really complicated working with people who were not part of a road association from the get-go, were not part of dealing with category four roads when they developed all the properties. I mean, there's so many issues going on of the Borellis thing, and as John said, this isn't the only parcel in the area that has this happening. It sounds like a, a number of these things happened all over Elk, Elk, uh, Elk Ridge, because it's so desirable place to live, and the demand was there to create smaller parcels via paper, paper deeds. So, while I have great sympathy, I also am very concerned about the precedent that doing this might set. As I said, I think getting the merger ordinance done is critical, uh, so that we don't continue to have so many of these things happen. Where there is the opportunity with joint ownership to be able to merge, where it's not, then it's gonna be complicated. Um, as I understand it, this parcel will still exist. No matter what we do here today, this landowner will still have their parcel, their home site, they probably just are not able to go forward with cannabis. But if this person is really wanting a cannabis parcel, you know what? There's a whole lot of them available out there on the market that aren't selling because the market has crashed for cannabis. But there are many, many properties that are legally sized, meet the general plan, the zoning, and probably even have some interim permits that have not gone away, but they're just deciding to sell and move away. And nobody's buying these, so the property values are plummeting. I think we heard yesterday from our tax assessor that while in urban areas in Humboldt, property values are going up, in rural areas, property values are going down. That's supply and demand, so there are some options. That doesn't necessarily work for this person, because Elk Ridge is a really awesome place to be, and many of these other parcels might very well be like on the north slopes, or any number of things that are not so desirable. And I, I, I get all of that. Um, any rate, those are just some of the, some of the reasonings around this, and, you know, I hope that there's some way for this person to find what they're looking for and all that, but at this point, I, I support the motion as it's put forward.
All right, thank you, and, um, any supervisors, by the way, 'cause I know there are screens, since we haven't been on a lot, if they're dead, try to wake him up before we do have a vote. Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, thank you, through the chair. Uh, Director Ford, there, I think there's ten or twelve parcels, um, in the Elk area, and so the, are you saying the only way to do this is to merge all ten or twelve of those together?
Not to completely revert to acreage, meaning they all need to be merged. It's really to reconfigure the parcels back to forty-acre minimums.
So, people lose and/or gain, and, and you have landowners that would have to really love giving up portions of their property, or other ones that would really love buying a portion of someone else's, which isn't practical, it's not gonna work, right?
I, I, I mean, that may be true. I, I think that the, that's a difficult part of this.
It is.
And, um, we don't take that light, lightly. We understand we're dealing with people's lives here.
Right, and to Supervisor Madron's, um, you have lots of good ideas today concerning this, thank you for your input, but also, we don't know if he has money to buy something else, and so that's not our call either. To Mr. Mattson, I have a question. Thank you, Director Ford. I'm wondering if you, um, you as representing this client have ideas, I guess I, I need to ask Supervisor, or Director Ford and yourself, um, if we deny this petition today, Director Ford, are you willing to work with them if, and to see if there's something that could work, and then to bring something back? Or has that already happened?
No, we're always willing to work with people. Um, I, I mean, regardless of what the board does here today, we will continue to work with this property owner and their agents.
So, it's, I mean, it'll, it'll be staff time, I'm, I'm assuming, Mr. Santos, 'cause you're doing this, so I apologize for that, but Nate, have you, or Mr. Mattson, have you tried to seek alternatives from the planning department?
Yes, absolutely. I, I think Cliff is probably tired of taking my calls, asking, is there a creative solution here that we can work for? Staff has been great to work with. They have been helpful, they have encouraged improvements to our requests, to the petition. I confirm exactly what Director Ford said. They, they've really worked hard to work with us. But this is the only viable option they've presented, as far as what can be done to solve this problem now. And, you know, a lot of really great discussion has gone on here this morning, and I just would love to add to that, that doing nothing right now is just keeping the problem. You know, we're, we're just maintaining the exact problem that we have, and I'd really encourage the board to consider, don't let perfect be the enemy of better, because what we have here is an opportunity to solve a single problem that, sure, it's, exists elsewhere, but this could be a path forward to a resolution for this one instance. And in this case, I think that improvement is better than status quo problem, and I'd encourage that to be considered in the process.
Thank you. So, along the lines of findings, as Supervisor Wilson has said, if we move forward with this petition and something comes from this, finding-wise, that could help those thousand parcels that have problems, would that not be a solution or helpful in this, um, procedure? It still would, could be denied when it comes back if no other solutions have been, um, you know, found? Or is, John, are you saying, sorry, Director Ford, that it's a waste of your staff time because you don't, you haven't seen any solutions?
And Director Ford, before you answer, I would also say perhaps you can talk about the finding that we're talking about here is a finding we have to make today, but yes, but Leon, I just wanted to make sure that that's a completely different thing than the, than with the findings I think that Supervisor Bushnell's asking about. That sounds like future.
Correct. So, um, relative to it being a, a waste of time, um, I, I, I wouldn't use those words, but it may come down to that. And that is really the opportunity that the board has to look at this critically and decide, okay, if staff goes out and works with the applicant and something comes back, you know, is this really a decision that you do want to consider? Do you really want to change a single parcel to change it to R eight, RA twenty, and FR B five twenty in the middle of a land use and zoning designation, large area, that is RA forty and FR B five forty? So, it's, it's extremely difficult to look at the regulatory scheme that's in place and say that, well, we can just start, you know, doing this for that parcel, and doing that for that parcel, and doing that for that parcel. That, that's, that's contrary to planning principles. And, and so that's where we're a little bit standing on principle here in the recommendation. Largely standing on principle in the recommendation. The, that's why the findings that need to be made for a general plan amendment and a re, a zone classification require the board to give consideration to the fact of, one, you know, is this something that needs to be done now? And it may need to be done now for a property owner, for, for their desire, but is it something that is in the public interest? That's the big finding. And, and so, as Supervisor Wilson mentioned, it may be something that's in the public interest to look at a much larger review of the existing parcels in the area and see if there's a, not a different legislative or regulatory scheme that should be applied to that area that makes sense. But to do it for one parcel, it's hard to make that finding that this is in the public interest.
Thank you. So, if I was to amend the motion to include that you look into the merger idea that Supervisor Madron says, or to look at this area entirety, to see what could be done, that would be appropriate?
Um, I think that that would get closer to being in the public interest than the, the current application.
So, I would like to amend the motion, then, that we, staying with the denial, but looking at the larger picture. I'm not sure of the language, and you may have to help me.
So, it sounds like you're making, you're making a motion for an amending motion to, or no, well, the motion right now is to deny.
I understand that, but my, my thought process is with, um, looking at the bigger picture for the greater good of the communities, to find solutions, as there seems to be a thousand-plus parcels out there that are like this, I can't imagine that this is the only application we're gonna get, and how do we move forward to fixing this solution with just leaving it alone and never revisiting it?
I think Supervisor, did you, Supervisor Wilson? I think he has suggested language.
Yeah, I, I have some amending language I can propose, and just, but see if it fits. So, the first part of that amending motion would be to direct staff to investigate and report back on a, on a merger ordinance, so we can, we can talk about that. So, that would be my first amendment. The second one would really be if the community, the Elk Ridge community seeks to do an area-wide amendment to, to the general plan, that, that then, you know, staff would begin to work with them on that process. We, we can't, I, it wouldn't be us that would initiate that, it really would have to be the, the, the community down there that does that. So, if there's a community interest in that, then of course, we would ask you to, to do that. So, I, I think those are both reasonable, uh, requests.
So, if I understand what you're saying is that the motion would be to adopt staff recommendation to don, deny this petition?
Yes.
With the further motion to direct staff to investigate and report back on a merger ordinance, and to report back on whether or not there's interest in the community to pursue a GPA and rezone.
Sure, good enough. Mm-hmm, yep.
Did that, did that add the piece you had been concerned about? I mean...
Yes, I, I want to find a path forward for landowners, um, and if singularly doesn't work, which doesn't, um, work with the general plan, then I want to, um, this is not going to stop coming to us, and I think that we need to have options for the parcels out there that are, are, um, non-conforming, and find solutions and work towards that.
Supervisor Bone?
And they can, and I'm fine with that. I'm just, they can do everything they want on this parcel, but cultivate, right? Is, is cultivation what's gonna make all of these pop, these thousand pop up? Not that we're gonna get a thousand pop up, but they can put, they can put fourteen acres of grapes in, and we can't say a word. They can put a Christmas tree farm, they can't say a word.
Okay.
They, they can put a hog farm, nobody's gonna say anything. Is that right?
Well, if, if they need a permit for anything, that's where it'll become...
Any other agriculture, though?
Any other agriculture, um, TPC, anything that we're not issuing.
Buildings, I understand, I understand, I understand.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, as the seconder, I would approve the amendments, and I want to thank Supervisor Bushnell for bringing those forward, and Supervisor Wilson for incorporating those. Just as a word of caution, I mean, many of these Elk Ridge parcels were bought for, you know, if they were twenty-acre parcels, they were probably bought for about twenty thousand dollars back in the eighties, or maybe forty thousand, right? Two thousand an acre. And the experience of Titlow Hill and the Borellis subdivision is that these property owners on these shaded parcels are literally gonna be contributing tens of thousands of dollars each to pay for the EIR, to do the general plan amendments and the zoning reclassifications, and a whole bunch more thousands of dollars for a road association and road upgrades of category four road standards. So, while it is an avenue, it's not an inexpensive avenue, and I just wanna make sure that we understand that, but it's really not our choice. It's up to those landowners, and if they choose to do that, but I will say, the reason that it's taken seven years for the Borellis subdivision is absolutely the cost involved. And it's the idea of, of everybody who are very independent, very much wanted their own parcel and their own way and their own thing, of now having to come together and work together to accomplish those changes and get their roads upgraded and all that, and that has not gone well. And that is absolutely a major reason for why it's taken so long to try and accomplish that. But if we give them the option, and we've directed planning to try and work with them, if they're interested, I support that. I think it's an avenue.
All right, so before we go to Supervisor Bushnell, Ms. Mattson, you can sit down. We don't wanna, but you can stay in the front row, just in case we call you back. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell, and then we do have one speaker on, on public comment.
So, I'm gonna, uh, ask a question around what Supervisor Bone did. So, agriculturally, they can do anything but grow cannabis, and additionally, they cannot build anything there. Is that correct statement?
Yes.
So, if they needed to, anything, do anything, build anything, they are doing?
Part of the struggle is the house isn't permitted, and it has no building permits on it. They have applied for building permits, but we haven't issued them because the parcel's not legal.
So, really, they can't do anything?
Um, well, they can't do anything that requires a permit, correct.
And so, the idea of, um, allowing people to come into compliance with their buildings, this parcel wouldn't allow that?
I completely understand that, and that, that's a huge struggle. That's why we go through the efforts of making sure that parcels are legal, because when we issue building permits, we legalize parcels. That's why the ordinance requires us to do that. Um, and, and it is a, a huge issue in Humboldt County, and there, as Mr. Santos mentioned, we come across a high percentage, not more than fifty percent, but it's a high percentage of parcels that were not created legally as part of the process of reviewing cannabis permits. And most of them, very small minority, are not able to be, uh, find a path forward to, to legalization, either through a lot line adjustment, or through adjustments, or a merger, or something else.
So, with the, um, idea that possibly, it sounds like he's submitted permits for the buildings that are there, the structures that are there, so possibly this application isn't centered around cannabis, it may be centered around him wanting to be compliant with our county, and we don't have a path forward for that, and that's problematic also.
Any other questions before I do go to the public comment period? When, yes, Supervisor Madron?
Um, so, is he able to go through the safe home programs? Is that how you're doing that, or not? No?
No. No.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Just was curious, because I've heard people doing that, but I guess to do that, you have to be on a legal parcel.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So can I back that with, then what do we do? Ignore this?
Well, I don't think that the board, as I understand, the motion is ignoring this. They're giving the applicant an opportunity to go out and work with the other property owners in the area and develop more of a comprehensive solution for the area than piecemealing things one at a time.
I understand that. The likeliness of that working director for it is probably 1%. So I'm just curious, I guess the merger thing, and maybe it'll come back to us. Thank you for that.
All right. Okay, we have one hand. Again, there's a three-minute time limit, so if you are speaker with the last four digits of 0898, you should be able to hear a tone and press star six and mute, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, this is Marisa Darpino from District Five out in the Titlow Hill area. And I agree with the planning director and his staff information and the data they provided that says that the Board of Supervisors should deny this application. We need a county-by-solution, not just an Elk River area community solution, and definitely not a parcel-by-parcel application solution that only gobbles up county representative time as well as Humboldt County residents. Subdivision is a state law, and if this is approved today, or even for further consideration on a parcel-by-parcel process, it only opens the floodgates. You've already mentioned Barella's and Titlow Hill. It's been five years, and they still haven't, there's still no road association, there's still no road improvement, there's still no volunteer fire association, there are no abatements on junk vehicles, et cetera. And approving this or looking forward into a parcel-by-parcel solution just isn't going to work. And we'll encourage more illegal subdivisions in the meantime. So one thing I didn't hear is another solution, kind of like with the drought, that the Board of Supervisors put a well-water moratorium on. How about one for parcel recordings if the parcels that want to be recorded are illegal subdivisions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. And there's no other hands up, correct? All right, we'll go back to the board. There's no members of the public that are here that care to speak under this, on this item either. Okay, so we're back to the board. We have the motion that's been amended a couple of times. Does anyone want to hear it restated?
So do we amend it?
Hee hee. So I guess there's no other conversation? Okay, just, whoops. Okay, one more conversation, yes?
I just feel, you know, I'm supportive of that it needs to be not singular and recognize the staff, that you guys have tried, and as Mr. Mattson had said, pains me, I'm going to vote for this, but it pains me greatly. I like to help and be, you know, solution-oriented. I think with the amendment, that hopefully we can get there. It's a struggle, though, and I do want to recognize Mr. Santos and Cliff, that you guys, you know, sought to find solutions, and, you know, none of these problems were created by you guys. So I am supportive, but it hurts my heart. I just have to say that.
All right. And are all the votes in? Every once in a while, those things do come up, and it's like... Okay. All right. So thank you, and with that, we will close this public hearing, and I'm sure we're going to be hearing more in the future. Before we go and talk about what's in the closed session, I did want to mention, our community had a huge loss yesterday, and I will be adjourning in memory of Donna Wright. I'm going to have Supervisor Bone say a few words.
Yeah, Phil, his family, I've known Phil for forty-some odd years, and Donna's husband, and they made a great partnership. She's been the executive director of the chamber the last five years, and it's made great strides to include so many different parts of the community. She just, they just had their annual dinner, and she was able to pull it together, COVID and everything aside, and was a wonderful success. She had a great personality and was committed to Humboldt County Eureka. And it's, when somebody's that young, she ran with the gals from Ser Optimist and a few others. She's got a pretty strong little posse that she ran with, and they did quite a few things. And it's just, when we lose somebody like that in our community, it tends to make us all sit back, and I've seen an outpouring of support that, you don't, you see it, but very rarely at this level. So I think it's more than appropriate that we close in Donna's memory and on behalf of her family from Humboldt County, wishing them the best through this tough time.
Yes, I think very well said. You know, she, and she was someone that had so much passion, energy, and laughter, and always smiling. It's very, she'll definitely be missed. Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
I also would like to extend my sympathies to the families and communities. Yesterday, I was reached out by several chambers in my district that had been so impacted by her positive note on, she was very dedicated to chamber and chamber ways and chamber beliefs, and in, you know, quite shock and recognizing what her, she brought to that world and what will be missed.
Yes, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to also extend my condolences, and I just want to, you know, in a world where we're doing things legislatively and we do things, Donna's a doer, right? And that's, I just have to say, like, that is just like, and so when we talk about all the resources within our community, whether it's infrastructure, or this, that, and the other, doers are also a huge part of that, and she is an apex doer, you know? I just have to put that out there. And so that's such, there, it's, yeah, I mean, on all of the other things, and that, and in that expression into the community that she is, that she put out there, I just want to say that that's, you feel it, really feel it, and she's going to be missed for a whole lot of reasons. But I just want to, for me, that was just, she's just one, she's one of those doers, and with a smile and grace, so.
All right, thank you. Nope, all right, Supervisor Madron, you didn't, no, you're good. I was going to say, I couldn't tell if you reached for your mic, okay.
To the choir of condolences, yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. So again, that will be later today when we do adjourn, it'll be in memory of Donna. County Council Billingsley, you ever brief on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items. The first is to discuss existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 in the matter of Kalin versus County of Humboldt, case number CV 200902. The second two are both to consider public employee appointment pursuant to government code 54957, first for the position of county council, and second for the position of health officer.
All right, thank you. And I do not see any speakers on the phone, so with that, we will go to public, everyone will go to adjourned to closed session. Can we take a, like, a nine-minute break? I mean, how about 11:30? Sounds good. All right, it's at 1:30. And may we have a report on a closed session?
Yes, thank you, Chair. On item M1, there's no reportable action. On item M2, the board voted unanimously to appoint Scott Miles interim county council effective April 17, 2022. And on item M3, there's no reportable action.
All right, thank you. And if anyone is watching on the screen and want to comment on items not on the agenda, you should call in right now and press star nine to raise your hand. It's going to go very quickly in the in-person crowd, because we only have two. So with that, I just, there's no one signed up on the speakers list, but, so either one of you want to come up first? All right, welcome, Glenda. And it's a strict three-minute time limit, okay?
Yep, it's not going to take me that long. Talking about code enforcement, and I'm going to read what I have here. I have listened a few weeks ago to code enforcement report and the building and planning. Yesterday, I listened again to building and planning and code enforcement issues. There seems to be an impasse to progressing to close approximately 1,200 open cases. You can use your teeth basically two ways. Yesterday, Mr. Bond was asking for more teeth for code enforcement, basically bite and chew harder. I would like to use my teeth in the other way. So I would like to have the time to rebut their remarks, that is, code enforcement report and building and planning, to show you that they have more than enough bite, because the Humboldt County code is written for them. I would like to suggest some changes to the code and procedures that will bring some much-needed relief. I cannot do it in three minutes. I would like to have an equal amount of time to present my point of view. I need to have Mr. Bond to make the motion that the case for 2225 Walker Avenue, McKinleyville, be told, told, until after I can put, be put on the board's agenda at least three weeks from now. I would like to start from the beginning. So I have had three documents processed, I assume you've got them, I'm not sure if you did, the picture of my property, April 7, the code enforcement document, and the other document. And that's all I have to say. If I'd like Mr. Bond to re-
All right, thank you, Glenda. We can't respond during public.
Okay, well, I'd like someone to make a motion, if I could.
No, we can't do that. We have to have things agendized, it doesn't work that way. But you have told us your concerns, and...
Okay, well, can I be put on the agenda, and how can I be put on the agenda then?
We can reach out to you. Usually, that would be, a supervisor could sponsor it. So why don't you leave us your contact information, and then we can work on that. All right, thank you, Glenda. Thomas, welcome.
Good morning, actually, good afternoon, Thomas Mulder here. I'm speaking as an individual, myself, not representing anyone, but I have no idea what you guys have been talking about all day, haven't been following your meeting, been in LTO class, happened to get out early, so I figured to pop in here and just share some stuff. You know, the cannabis community is struggling. You guys have made some relief as far as taxes and other things. But I remind you, there was a letter sent from the Planning Commission to you asking for guidance, and then a really vague response, at least vague in my opinion, was sent back. I would ask every one of you to reread ordinance 1.0 and look at the, as far as energy use, what's the rules and requirements in there of what the ordinance passed, and remind you to look through all the hearings and everything that happened in ordinance 2.0, and energy use was not changed in ordinance 1.0, any applicants. I, myself, as applicant, I believe that hooking to the grid is better for my carbon footprint, and I took it upon myself, my application isn't forced to go on to alternative energy or anything like that. I'm over two years into the process, over $20,000 in electrical engineering, almost $30,000 in design and plan. I get a call on Friday from PG&E, "Sorry, we can't go forward with your project, we have no power to give you." It's two to seven years. So here I am, sitting out, almost $30,000, sitting on a waiting list, and I continue, as an individual, I continue to see all of these projects being conditioned to hook to the grid, there ain't no power to give them. So I ask you to really rethink about the expectations you're asking applicants to do. If it's something that can't actually be done, are you setting up the industry for failure? Do we want to do everything possible to make the cannabis industry survive and thrive? Because it's tough right now. It's very, very tough. Collecting from people, all kinds of different things. It's the toughest industry ever. And, you know, it would be good for clear guidance. It's very unfortunate to see people get conditions put on a project that they will never, ever be able to meet. But thousands of hours of public testimony went through ordinance 1.0 and 2.0, and there's nothing restricting energy use there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Thomas. And we do have a couple of speakers on the phone. Again, this is items that were not on the agenda. And our first one is 0116.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Ash Peter. Didn't listen to the morning stuff, but as far as I read on the agenda, the COVID local emergency was ended anyways, so hopefully that's the case, and hopefully that, you know, the county can stop testing its employees and saying what the kids at school, because there is, you know, there are chemicals that people probably shouldn't be sticking up their nose on a daily or weekly basis. Let me see, hopefully, we can, like, if we go into another state of emergency, we can really look a lot more at local data, because, I mean, I just got a, like, an information request back that, like, only 72 of our COVID deaths, yes?
Well, I was just going to say, we did have some of those discussions earlier this morning, so we stopped your timer, so you can continue on. It's just, much of that was kind of on what we discussed this morning, so just wanted to give you a reminder there.
Okay, well, just stay in my piece here, I'm sorry, wasn't able to turn into this morning. Anyways, yeah, so hopefully, next time, we can pay more attention to local data, because I'm only, like, 72 of the deaths that we had, like, due to COVID, actually had two or more comorbidities. So, you know, it's always bad when people die, but, you know, we can't blame it all on COVID. Also, with the 5G coming in, I was tuning into the Planning Commission, and one of the things that, you know, they brought up is the federal government saying that no consideration can be made for health impacts to placement of 5G equipment. And I'd imagine that's where, you know, all the small cell things are going to go around town, it's like the little painted box I see everywhere, that's what it looks like in other cities. But anyway, I just wanted to have you listen to this. This is Dr. Yuval Nora Harari, who's the transhumanist top advisor to Klaus Schwab in the World Economic Forum.
Now, in the past, many tyrants and governments wanted to do it, but nobody understood biology well enough, and nobody has enough computing power and data to hack millions of people. Neither the Gestapo nor the KGB could do it. But soon, at least some corporations and governments will be able to systematically hack all the people. We humans should get used to the idea that we are no longer mysterious souls, we are now hackable animals. Data might enable human elites to something even more radical than just build digital dictatorship. By hacking organisms, elites may gain the power to re-engineer the future of life itself. By hacking organisms, elites may gain the power to re-engineer the future of life itself. Because once you can hack something, you can usually also engineer-
That's just my point, is, you know, there's a lot going on in the world, like, there's, you know, supposed nanotech in the shop, I bet you guys can find it on the-
All right, thank you, thank you, Ash. All right. Then 0326 is our other hand up. Just a reminder, we did have conversations today on COVID-19, and the situation, and ending the emergency, so if you're calling to speak on that, this is not the time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear all that, my ears are kind of bad. But anyway, I wanted to, my wife also wanted to comment separately. We watch a number of Chinese news television channels. Shanghai's 26 million people, million people have been locked down for three weeks with zero tolerance. Residents have taken multiple COVID tests. People are prohibited from leaving their homes, even for food. I previously heard rumors of high-rise apartment buildings' doors being welded shut, and I didn't, wasn't sure about that, but then I saw a video of it being done. Most are just padlocked. Markets have been closed or are empty. Delivery people can't deliver or are locked up also. The food distribution system has collapsed. Starving people have stormed supply points, broken barriers in the streets, and struggled with the so-called enforcers. One video taken from a high-rise showed a mob of hundreds of people charging past a barricade when they were allowed to hunt for food. Everybody is screaming and banging pots. You know, this is a bunch of houses, building, high-rise buildings stuck together, you can hear the noise. No one knows when this is going to end. The Communist Party is unyielding on maintaining zero tolerance. It has drones with loud speakers blasting out, "Control your soul's desire for freedom", as if that's going to make a difference. One Chinese video showed a struggling business owner forcibly pulling his wife out of the high-rise building apartment window, killing them both. Another video showed a woman throwing money out of her high-rise window, then jumping to her death. Money is useless if you can't buy food. Children from infected families are taken away. Like China, America's TV and media hides the impact of the lockdowns, mental health, despair, suicides, et cetera. People have been abused by politicians, public health officials, doctors, hospitals, and pharmaceuticals. People do not trust them anymore. I mean, you gotta remember, people can't believe this propaganda forever. Pfizer was forced by a Texas court to release three months of vaccine data, but they also said that they would entertain requests to release additional data in May 2025, five, what's that, three years from now? Another court challenged the pharmaceutical claim that it would take 55 years to release their COVID data. Why should we trust this misinformation, disinformation, and malinformation? Medical science has now been replaced by political science based on money. Thank you, this is my wife.
Hello, this is Genevieve. I say, suddenly, everything is gone. You don't have to wear your mask. They say the COVID is over. No, 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 I don't think so. Election time is coming, the COVID is coming back, and people have paranoia. I see people still wearing a mask and going to the places, if you can smell fart, and then the mask doesn't work, to be crude like that. But my point is, everything is coming, come back to life. The other day, in Fortuna, I went to listen to the concert, for one hour, I went in there, they say, "Where is your vaccine pass?", and you still have to wear a mask. What's going on? Is that working? We don't want vaccine pass, just like China right now, zero tolerance, zero tolerance bearing no germ. How are you going to be no germ? Living in a bubble, like, a long time ago? But my point is, wake up, get the book, The Real Anthony Fauci, by Robert Kennedy, and you know the whole fact, and think for yourself. Take your vitamin D, zinc, and plenty of sleep, and vitamin C. And I talked with one person, she tested positive from the home kit, and he took, he went home, he took vitamin C, 2,000 milligram, and vitamin D, 6,000 IU, I usually take 5,000, and then vitamin D, 50 milligram, and Kusatin. In three days, she got better. Stay away from the hospital, rendezvous will kill you. How many people get killed? And also, some people forced to take the vaccine. One lady, she took it so she could see her dying husband. The next day, she got sick. Her gallbladder was removed, and part of her small intestine appendix, and right now, he had kidney problem. Since October, he goes back and forth in the hospital for five times. Her husband didn't die, come home, wanted to see her, then she had, he had to take a vaccine or get tested, and he tested positive. How come? She just come back from home, from the ICU to home. So he tested again, two times, it's negative, unreliable. My point is, so what is he going to do? My point is to say that the test is not reliable, you cannot, have no human feeling anymore, just like China. We don't want to turn into like China vaccine passport. So people stand up, if you're tolerated, you're still wearing a mask, compliance, and the next thing is vaccine passport. Some stores still require you to take them, to wear masks. My point is, don't use your common sense and wake up, that's all I can say. Another person, she come back, she come from Marseille, to come to visit her daughter, and then he got sick, had minor surgery. They want to see him, they say you need a vaccine passport, and then they give the person a bunch of medication-
All right, thank you, thank you very much. I don't see anyone else, do you, Nikki? Okay, so, as we come back, we'd just like to remind people, and I would ask that people try to, if we, when we have the COVID update, we prefer, if you could say all things COVID at that time, we have it monthly, is that, and we may not have it again. So I just, if we have, if this, you know, this would have been more appropriate for this morning, but we are here in the afternoon, and was a little bit different than what we talked about this morning. So with that, is there anything else we have to do? No? Well, then, I think sadly, we're going to be adjourning today in the memory of Donna Wright. And with that, we are adjourned. Wait.
You can put that on the agenda.
All right, we are adjourned.